Councilwoman Bousman, here.
Bestaludie.
Here.
Morantie.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Bernigan.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Roni.
Here.
Sauer.
Yeah.
Polo.
Here.
President Pedro.
Here.
Councilwoman Sauer, the purpose for attending virtually?
Uh, I'm at the work.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have an introduction in a second to receive the call of the meeting's place at five? Gary, and the introduction to receive, I'm sorry, here it gets. Uh, here. To receive the call of the meeting.
Yes, introduction.
Um, thank you. Oh, it was Gary, ended.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Anyone opposed? Mayor Johnson will now go see the council.
Good evening, members of the public, common council, common council president. I would like to first thank fellow members of the D E A, the treasurer Heather Campbell, and the common council president, Tom DiPietro, all of the hard work and practice we've put in. As we look ahead to the coming fiscal year, I'm pleased to present a budget that reflects our city's commitment to fiscal responsibility, balanced growth, and prioritizing the needs of our community. This budget acknowledges the challenges we face, particularly in areas like benefits and debt obligations, but it also celebrates our success in delivering the likes of many strategic decisions we are making to build a stronger, more resilient future. First, it's worth noting that the cost of mandatory benefits such as retirement, workers' compensation, health insurance, and social security have continued to rise and increased over 275,000 from last year alone. Over the past three years, we've seen these costs grow by more than 935,000, a substantial number that underscores how important it is to plan lives. While healthcare costs have risen almost 10% and retirement benefits are up 15%, these benefits are essential to attracting and retaining the talented, dedicated workforce that serves our city each day. We are also honoring our contractual commitments to employees with fair and reasonable increases to reflect the hard work and dedication they bring to our community. Departments such as H P D are seeing increase in support and additional officer, which will help us better serve and protect our residents. We have started conversations with the county's Office of Aging to improve our senior services. This will also help the city better serve our seniors and cut money from the budget. Our ongoing investment in infrastructure also played key roles in this budget. That service has increased as we continue to make vital capital investments to improve city services and facilities. These projects include L E V streetlight replacements, a new ladder truck for the fire department, eighty improvements to city hall, and continued work on major projects like parish street breaks. These are central steps toward building a safer, more sustainable, accessible city for everyone.
Sorry, Ma.
Yep.
Could you possibly speak up a little louder?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're also pleased to announce that we've identified new revenue sources to help offset rising expenses. These include modest growth in lodging and cannabis tax revenue. For those unfamiliar with cannabis tax revenue, it's distributed with nine percent going to New York State and four percent to local localities, with 25% of the local share allocated to the county and 75% to municipality where the sale occurred. Along this, we anticipate additional revenue from increasing building permits and property sales. Additionally, by adjusting certain fees such as those for parking and lease backs, we're able to do more effectively balance our revenue streams in a way that aligns with our community's needs. We've implemented small adjustments to certain fees to better balance our revenue stream while keeping taxpayer costs as low as possible. For instance, there will be a slight 50% 50% increase per bag or lease this room, and parking meter rates will rise 50% per hour. These adjustments along with 10% increase in parking ticket fees will help support the central city services without facing a large burden on any single group of residents aligning with the prices of cities similar to our size and size. Importantly, to minimize the tax impact on our residents, we're leveraging over 800,000 from the city's fund balance. This truant decision allows us to lower the tax increase from the cap of 2.3% to a much more manageable 1.5%. We know that every dollar matters, and by making these adjustments, we're ensuring that our residents feel the smallest possible impact while navigating the city to meet the rising costs and fulfilling our obligations. Overall, this budget reflects our commitment to careful, thoughtful planning in a challenging economic landscape. It represents a balance between meeting today's needs and preparing for tomorrow's demands. I'm confident that with these strategic decisions, we're positioning our city for continuous success, stability, and growth. Thank you.
May I have an introduction and a second to receive the made budget message and the Board of Estimate and Enforcement's resolution with proposed budget for 2025? Ron and Margaret.
Ronnie.
Ronnie.
I know he's usually right here, right?
Ronnie and Margaret. All those in favor, receive the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to adjourn. A public hearing on the proposed budget will be held on Thursday, November 21st at 6:00 P M. Uh, Emma, can I?
Can I ask some questions? So I reviewed the budget, I attended pretty much all of the D E A meetings, and there are a couple of areas that I would like to ask some questions about now that we have received the budget of the most. I looked at revenues year over year from 2022 to 2025. Current year, and I attended all of these meetings, I think Heather, you're here, yes? I attended these meetings. Personally, I have some understanding of what the differences are, but I think it would be beneficial for those members of the council who do not have the luxury of attending afternoon meetings and members of the public to understand some of the items that I flagged. Uh, in 2024, current year, um, the projected income was 15.4 million year-to-date, which was through, I think, September, October, Heather, was 10 million, and I think it would be helpful to have a comment on the differential between year-to-date 10 million versus the projected of 15 million.
Um, yeah, there's a few things that impact that. A couple of the major ones are, one of our big revenue streams is state aid, about 1.5 million to under 1.5 million, and trust me, that has not changed in time as I've been here, so we're not getting any extra from them, even though management costs keep rising. But that's about a million and a half. The other thing is that, um, there are two other major components that you would be aware of because we voted on them through various budget amendments. Um, I'll put them down into two basic groups. One would be CHIPS. That's other types of state aid. So there's really now four or five, I think. So there's CHIPS, which is one, then there's state tour receipts, which is another, paid New York, um, steam waders recovery, and PA, paybar cocktails. Those numbers, the state makes a determination in terms of what those numbers are going to be. Generally, when we get those, we do a budget amendment to include that full amount as potential spending and potential revenue. So the other thing to realize is that those things are all an offset for whatever revenue we project. We forget to equal that expenditure. However, often, Rob Harry will determine that it is more efficient to do major progress every two years, and he likes to let the monies, because money doesn't go away generally, money builds up. So I think if you look in the budget, I think the state tour receipts alone is almost like two and a half million dollars, and he's probably not spending much of that this year. Um, the thing to realize in that is you only get the revenue if you incur the expense. So if we're not realizing that revenue, it has a mutual impact on the bottom line because it also means we didn't get the expenses. If we incur the expenses, whether or not we receive the actual reimbursement from the state, we would recognize that revenue in the same year, so it will always be an offset. The second thing that's kind of a major impact, which is similar but different, would be grants. Um, and that ranges anywhere from Friends of Hudson Youth, so if you look, you know, the original budget for the youth department was X, the adjusted budget is, you know, X plus 150 grand or whatever it is they contributed over the course of the year. They're, or not the only people that provide grants. And again, grants work in the same way in that if you recognize the revenue, you also recognize an anticipated expenditure, that's what you're getting the grant for, it's a paid expenditure. H P D is a good example, they got an L E tech grant for 100 grand, so the adjusted expense line for equipment, which is what that grant was for, went up by 100 grand, but they were doing corresponding increase in revenue for a grant line. So, um, the thing about grants is that once you've received a grant, again, they work on, the L E tech one being an exception to the rule where we actually just got the money, but almost overwhelmingly, grants are reimbursable based, which means you have to incur the expense and you have to go and tell them this is what I've done and get the money back. And, um, generally, when the grants are committed to a certain thing, they're committed to that thing, and it may take multiple years for that thing to happen. Um, you know, another example would be the Spark Grant for the Trumples Park. Initially, I know they may be changing their commitment, but the initial commit was 350,000. They only spent about 120 of it the first year. The difference between that gets rolled over and is called the encumbrance. So that would also impact, you know, you start a new budget, because none of those are part of the original budget, those are all end up being budget amendments in the beginning of the year. So all the open grant monies that haven't been expended but are still face for projects that are still underway would also get added into the amended budget.
Thank you. Um, may I continue with my questions?
Sure.
The next area that I really focused on was on the youth department. Before I ask these questions, um, I want to say that I have a great deal of respect for what has gone on in the youth department over the last number of years. I think that Liz has really done a phenomenal job. She has expanded globally. Um, it is, to me, an exceptional endeavor, although I do have some questions around budget in the youth department. I went back from 2022 to 2025, and I looked at total, you know, whether it was projected or actual, year over year, and what percent of the actual revenue, I used revenue for the city for the youth department, that we're expanding on that. So we're looking at totals, in 2022, we were at 572,000, 2023 was 758, which was a 32% increase from year over year. Then it was relatively flat, 2024, 759, year-to-date expenditure is 649, um, the adjusted is 911, which I believe is coming from the Friends of Hudson Youth monies, and 2025 is 798. So what we have seen, um, over this time, big jump from 2022 to 2023 of 32%, uh, it was about even the next year, and then there was a 5% increase for the 2025 budget over the prior year. I don't know whether anyone can explain the jump from 2022 to 2023, 32% increase in expenditures. When I looked at, um, the percent of the total youth budget that was expended on youth personal services, uh, 2022 and 2023 was 62, 63%, and then 2024, 25, it goes up to 73, 74%. The youth department, uh, was 4.3% of total revenue in 2022. From 2023 through 2025, it hovers around 5%, it's 5.4% in 2023, but it's 4.95%. So this is a very significant, uh, investment from our overall revenue. So I don't know whether it's too far in the past to explain the jump from 2022 to 2023 of 32% in expenditure on the youth department. It may be too far in the past, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's Liz here. Don't know about that. And then we have the increase in personnel, uh, personnel costs. With regard to the youth department, the most recent information that we received, which was last year, and we don't get breakout in the youth department of monies, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to caution them, at the public hearing.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Sorry. At the public hearing, all department heads will be here to answer these questions. So go ahead, continue.
That's fine.
I think it's nice that she's asking them because the department has.
I just want to put this out there, yeah. Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. So, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
So, last year, and I requested this year, I haven't gotten it back yet from the youth department, um, when we asked about the children who are receiving after-school programming in the youth department. And bear in mind, the youth department does a lot of things. They do the summer program, they maintain the, uh, the park around the, around the pond, uh, they also do, they do summer camp. Uh, summer camp has people from outside of Hudson on a, on a fee schedule and so forth. So they do a lot, but we don't get a breakdown of how exactly, how much of this budget is going to after-school programming, how much is summer camp, how much is maintenance of the, of the pond and so forth. They do certain parks and rec, parks and rec maintenance as well, so we don't have that kind of breakdown. That said, the most recent information that we received from the, from the youth department was that close to 40% of the children and youth participating in after-school programming in the Hudson City Youth Department do not reside in the city of Hudson. I get it that they are at the Hudson City School District or that they may have previously lived in, in the city of Hudson. Over the last three or four years, I have made multiple proposals to the youth department, Friends of Hudson Youth, and also to the mayor's office. First was families using our department, and, you know, fine, 5% of our revenue is going to this. Families outside of the city of Hudson, should they contribute in the way that they contribute for the summer program? Initially, that was considered, hmm, that might be interesting. Friends of Hudson Youth was willing to consider it, so long as no child was, was prevented from attending, they were willing to consider scholarships. Uh, that didn't go anywhere. The next thing I suggested was, because I was told, well, there are families who've been using the department for a couple of years, we can't turn them away, and I'm like, okay, how about we grandfather in? All families currently using the youth department, any new families coming in who are not living in the city of Hudson need to contribute. That didn't go anywhere. Uh, in a meeting that we had in the summer with the mayor and members of the supervisors for County, Linda Musman brought up, brought up the issue that Hudson provides a lot of services to County, yet we do not get very much in return. Vicky Datschaludie brought up the issue of the youth department and the fact that we are providing services to children who do not live in the city of Hudson, and it comes out of our budget, and we are providing these after-school services. Uh, in that meeting, there was a conversation between Matt Morel and our mayor that they would explore that, we have not heard anything more on that. At this point, I think that it is really necessary, oh, and the other, in another meeting that I had with mayor's office and other individuals, was, well, this is really the youth department for the Hudson City School District. If it is the youth department for the Hudson City School District, they have a budget of over 52 million. If indeed we are offering services after school for children in the Hudson City School District, the school district, we should be approaching to ask for some funding to provide services for their students. And so I really feel that this is a significant part of our budget. It is, it is very well done. It is currently under this direction, very well-run program. The programming has expanded, it has improved, uh, the quality of the program is excellent. Uh, but we, I think we really need to address getting funding from either municipalities or the county to support this program for children who do not reside in the city of Hudson. I do not understand why the taxpayers, and by taxpayers, I mean not just homeowners but renters, because you are paying property taxes through your rent, we are all paying for this, and I think we need to be looking at getting money in to cover this excellent program. But that's just, I just want to put that out there. Uh, these are some of the numbers that I've come up with.
I just wanted to say a couple of things.
Sorry, Ma.
I just want to say a couple of things.
Yeah. And also shout, because I forgot to put in my hearing.
Some of the rising costs, you know, could be from the having programming with COVID happening over the past three years, but it also could be from the youth center unionizing and seeing increases in wages as well. I will add that the youth center, summer program, and fall and winter programs, we hire the most young people, um, you know, anywhere in the county, and I really think that it sets a bad precedent for us to start telling families who have grown up and historically abused the youth center that you can no longer afford to live in Hudson, so we no longer want you to pay for you to use the services that you grew up loving. Um, I think that's a bad idea. I think that the youth center is the one direct service that the city offers to families, and we should be happy, like, as a taxpayer, I'm happy that that's where my funds go.
I think, in response to that, if I may.
Yeah.
I don't think Margaret is saying to direct that towards families. Uh, I think it's more those areas where those people are living and paying taxes should offer up something, so we're not trying to penalize.
And I agree, I agree with, you know, asking the county for my money, and I was part of those conversations, but when it comes down to it, I don't think that, you know, we should penalize families and kids.
Agreed.
Because they no longer can afford to live here.
But why won't, why won't the county pay? Because we are providing it for now, for free. Yeah, why would they?
Yeah, exactly.
So we have to come up with something.
And what, what came off the, Ma, what came off the meeting that we had in the summer where you and Matt Morel agreed that you would agree to need to discuss the youth department? What was the outcome of that meeting?
Yeah, I reached out for conversations and I haven't.
I'm sorry.
I reached out for conversations and I haven't heard anything back.
But you haven't spoken to Matt Morel?
I haven't.
Because he had said that he would have ongoing conversations with you.
I haven't.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Yes.
No, no.
All right, good question. Uh, you said that we went from a 2.3% increase down to a 1.5% increase by using money that was going to apply to the fund balance.
No, no, no.
In the fund balance. In the fund balance, right, there. So, how much money is used from the fund balance?
Eight hundred K.
Three hundred thousand. Three hundred thousand.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand, okay. So where does that put our fund balance now in percentage of our total budget? That, we did the figures, we're together, and, uh, fund balance is healthy, and then depending on how you find out, you know, do you have to look at it? Go ahead, I don't know, who might.
I mean, according to the controller's standards, it's usually two, um, set, two.
Two months, you mean it's half two months expenses.
Yeah, expenses.
We have two months expenses.
Yeah, well.
You can sustain it, we wouldn't do it otherwise, and I think Heather wouldn't agree to it either. I have one more question. Then, uh, for the police department, for H P D, my understanding is that you're, you do not receive all the requested funds that you requested. So what did you not receive, and how is that going to have an impact, you think, on the city in the future?
Are you talking about for grant funding, or do you mean for what we just requested in our overall budget?
What you just requested in our overall budget that you did not receive.
It'll be challenging, uh, but we'll make it through. Uh, we, we always find a way, and we have a plan to also apply for some additional grants that won't open until the beginning of 2025. So, um, we won't really have an answer, and so we're able to apply for those and get a response.
So, uh, chief, one of the things, as I recall from those meetings, was I think you had requested, uh, three positions, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and none of those were approved?
One was.
One was.
Yes.
So, does the, uh, fact that the other two were not, what is the impact of the non-funding of the additional two officers mean for you?
Um, again, that, that will be challenging. Uh, right now, we have to still be able to fill the, those positions, um, or that additional position as it is, we don't have a current civil service list.
Okay.
So we're waiting for that list to come out, which, um, hoping will happen sometime in December, at the latest beginning of January. Um, and then to fill that one position, it could take up to six to eight months to get them in the academy and trained.
Right.
But again, there is another federal grant for a hiring grant, um, but that, again, doesn't open itself by fiscal year of the beginning of Q1 for next year. Um, and then it will take a few months to even hear a response back. So, um, my goal is to be able to apply for that grant and to be able to, um, fund another position.
Okay.
For this.
Do you feel that the not having that extra position right now will have a impact to the city?
We will be able to fulfill our requirements and our minimum staffing barring anybody leaves or gets hurt, and I hope that doesn't happen, um, but we'll be able to fulfill what we need to fulfill, um, and hopefully with an additional hire, we can continue to participate in community events and be present for anything that we need to.
Looking, taking away what exists.
Yeah.
You understand that? We have.
Yeah, it's keeping the number, it's adding one number.
Adding one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not taking away, and.
Right, it's not taking away from what we currently have.
And I will put this out there, that those two positions would have a far greater impact on the budget than any of the youth center. Between wages, between retirement, between fringe, it, it's a very expensive.
Yes, um, I share similar thoughts as Margaret concerning the youth department. I love youth department, I think they're doing a great job.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, I, I think they're doing a great job, but at some point, I mean, how do we visualize this, in like, for 50 years, we have to be paying, um, supporting the county kids and them not contributing, the county not contributing to us, that's not fair for the taxpayers of the city. So at some point, we have to really sit down and figure out a solution, and maybe a good, way negotiation can be this, um, 25% of, um, the dispensaries. Uh, we are providing the city with a great tax year, 25% to the county.
Right.
And in return, I mean, the least thing they can do is just give us.
They're just writing a check.
Yeah.
Uh, to get their 25% of that 4%, all they're doing is processing their check.
Well, at least we would like to have 200,000 a year, towards that. I mean, we'd really have to demand it. And, and mayor, if you, I would love to be in the part of a meeting, if we can have a meeting with Margaret, me, and whoever else wants to be part of this, because enough is enough. Now we're going to be giving enough money with this 25%, we need to have that in return.
So I want to make, I want to make one other comment to what Vicky had just said. For many years, I have personally supported the Friends of Hudson Youth.
Mm-hmm.
I love the youth department, I think they do a fantastic job. Uh, I am very impressed by Liz and, and what she is doing. For me, the point is, what I choose to do with my private money is my business. Sitting here on this council, I am responsible for, uh, looking at the revenues and the monies that the city of Hudson has. and the monies that the city of Hudson has and making decisions on behalf of the residents of the city of Hudson, not making decisions on behalf of a particular group I favor or I don't favor. I am very supportive of Friends of Hudson Youth, very supportive of Liz and of the youth department. I've been incredibly impressed by what she has been able to accomplish in the last three or four years. She has really brought that whole program on. She brings on new things, she, the work she's doing at the lake, it's fantastic. Every year, and then we get our monthly reports, more and more enrichment programs. It's an exceptional program. And the better it gets, guess what, the better it gets, the more people outside of the city of Hudson are going to want to say, hey, here's this fabulous program. It's free, let's go there.
We're going to look at it as that additional funding would only help to.
Exactly, that's exactly.
It would.
That is exactly right.
This isn't an issue about the youth department's performance in any way. This is about fairness with the county.
That's exactly.
So let's put a dollar amount on it. What is it that we're spending? And we're all for this. We don't want to turn anybody away. You know, but at the very least, a negotiating tactic or point with the county.
That's exactly right.
This can also be an item on our county supervisors, five county supervisors to do. Yeah, that is their job, is to represent the city of Hudson at the county level. You know, we already just got, you know, with the Lebanon Warren Street, you know, don't even get us started on that. But yeah, our county supervisors could then be, you know, advocating for us on this, on this point.
And Linda, Linda, did bring it up, which is how that Vicky into the discussion of the youth department.
So let's just say the meeting with our supervisor. Let's just fly on that.
Well, I think each member of the council, there's two of you, you supervisor, you should approach.
I have. And, and I got a shock.
I have one more question, relevant of this. I emailed you, Tom, it's about the budget.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
It had no relevance that much.
Oh, it doesn't have.
I thought, yeah, my response, did you get our response?
No. What was the question, Vicky?
About the twelve thousand in the pocketbook.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vicky, what was?
No, but it's twelve thousand. I thought we raised the amount.
That's because we hadn't actually agreed to any.
We haven't done it.
Signed it yet. Twelve thousand, what we put in is the minimum.
So it's twelve thousand, okay.
I'm not sure.
The pocketbook factor.
Oh, yes, yes.
We're trying to get more for the year.
So Kamal may have addressed this, but I'm having, I'm hearing impaired right now. Within this budget, if, when, if, when we vote in favor of it, we are de facto voting in favor of increases in various fees. So in the meetings I attended, I know that there's an increase in fees for blue bags.
Not sure about that.
I'm sorry. Did he mention the blue bags?
Blue bags, what else?
I'm sorry.
Tickets and parking meters.
So in the, on the parking fees that are, that are baked into this, does this include charging ten dollars a day for the lot across Mount Truck, or is that separate?
We kind of roughly figured it out.
I, I actually was looking at this, and I think this is low.
Right.
It's very low.
Delivery.
There.
Right.
Well, because we also made, we had made several assumptions, and the assumptions are that not one hundred percent of people who are buying the permits, never when they were oversold. So you have to assume the amount of revenue by that. Then we have to assume that not everybody's going to be willing to pay for that. Then you have to be willing to realize that if, as most of us suspect, many of them are weekenders, they're no longer going to be paying for seven days a week, they're going to be paying for five days. We're going to have to reduce by that. So we went through all of those mechanics and basically came up with that number. And I think we assumed, I think we assumed a seventy percent retention rate that would be the number of buying person that would continue to buy them under the process.
But Heather, in your, in this assumption here, as we look at this budget and we're voting or not voting for it, part of what we're voting for is that the lot across from Amtrak would charge people ten dollars a day every day if they park.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to clarify. Yes, thank you.
Let me ask you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Actually, you're judging, it's underestimated revenue, it's not a bad thing.
I'm not saying it is.
It's just a good surprise.
I'm just saying, there may be a surprise.
We're hoping.
Yeah, that's what we hope.
Anything else? Oh, Heather.
I just have one other observation to make, because when we were calculating the budget, we didn't know what was going to happen. But if you're paying attention to the poll collection, you know that once again, the city voted in full force to increase another fifty thousand dollars to the library. And, you know, while we all think that is also a great, wonderful thing, I just want you to realize when we're taking a one point five percent increase in taxes, that's eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifty thousand a rack is gone.
Yes.
Gone. So the entire tax increase for a seventeen million dollar budget is thirty-five thousand dollars of extra dollars.
Yep.
So, I mean, I just, that to me is one of the better ways to, like, communicate how much we are challenged from an expenditure standpoint and how hard we are collectively working to try and keep the tax increase as low as possible. But literally, one percent is fifty-six thousand dollars. That's what a one percent tax increase across the entire city is worth. And, you know, people love to say, support the library, vote yes to donate fees my taxes, and I'm not questioning where they think the money's coming from.
No, I have to say, you guys, the team made an incredible job keeping the taxes, you know, decent, really good. But about the library increase, I really don't understand why, why is fourteen percent increase, did we know? Why did the budget went up that? Yeah, I know. Why exactly was that?
Because the library has a lot of donors gave it to them.
But last year was a hundred.
But it's, it's a referendum on whatever.
No, I know, I know.
I think the council is willing within its rights to go for the two and a half in that case, because the voters paid, voters asked for an increase. But with that being said, I think. Yeah, it's done a great job in keeping it up.
I will tell you, you know, I looked into a lot of the other municipalities and Havre's on their land works. And now we're giving about four hundred, right?
Yeah.
Not really out of lack.
It's not, but we can do this every year. I mean, at some.
And it just, at some point, they have to.
Fun fact.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's a beautiful library. I'm just saying, we can afford it every year. And as Heather said, we have.
And they had to write a letter to their board asking them to reduce the tax for this year.
Yeah, but also that library is part of the Columbia County library system. It is one library system. My library card gets me into any library in Columbia County. So why is this a municipality by municipality vote? Why is it not a Columbia County vote for what Columbia County residents are willing to pay percentage rights out of their state taxes, out of their county taxes to fund the library? Why does it have to go municipality by municipality?
So you mean the library of the Chatham though, it's Columbia County?
Sorry?
I think it's, it's.
My, my card takes me into.
I think that's a more of a network for, it's what it's association of libraries.
The municipalities that rely on our library than our house. And that's crucial, and they should pay more towards it. That should also be part of what our supervisors work for. And that, I think, is really thanks being, we got to get our supervisors to start representing us better at the county level. Because we are, you know, it's not like old Hudson, old rural Hudson, which they always saw as a burden to the county. We are. Found jewel.
I definitely.
Let's face it, we are.
Yeah.
Was there a similar referendum they agreed for? Or, you know, they might see you ten thousand dollars.
They went from eighty-five to ninety.
They don't have their own library, so they're usually, and they're not going.
So again, it's a Columbia County, you know, good.
So we need to have a meeting. I mean, it comes down to this.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, back in the day, in this job, I tried to get the supervisors to come to our meeting specifically, and they were just not. So I mean, I agree.
So if we try, we can try to help them. It can be before, before one of our meetings.
Anything else?
No.
And I have a motion to adjourn, oh, to remind you, first of all, that the public hearing is on the twenty-first, and then sooner or later, we get the council to vote on it.
When will the council vote?
Twenty-sixth. Come, we're gonna be in public question there, because I don't know.
Oh, oh. Public hearing will occur before I vote.
Yes.
We have any comments or questions?
Okay. I have a motion. I haven't heard some dumb one.
What's that? I would, I would like to ask the council for their representation on Monday for the Veterans Day parade. If we can.
Sorry.
We should represent on Monday.
This Monday.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I wanted to be here.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Can I get a motion?
Do you have a second for a motion? Don't. Just a second, somebody. Rodney, not to watch. We're dying to use that.